Am I real good? Oh, sorry.
It sounds like an emergency order.
Okay, we will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council on January 28, 2020. Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out?
No final action tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, January 28, 2020. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Howell.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Kozlowski is absent.
Okay, and if you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda updates this evening?
You do have one update tonight. Item number four has been amended. The amendments have been provided to the City Council and copies are available to the public at the back table.
Okay, please call the first item.
Your first item tonight is Business from the Floor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council concerning any items that are not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes, and except for certain specific actions, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. You have one request to speak tonight from Michelle LaMonica.
Okay, Michelle, come on down. And while she's making her way down, if anybody else would like to speak to the Council on an item not on the agenda, if you could grab a blue card from the table back there and give it to Officer Salvo, right here, yeah, right here at the podium.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm a parishner at St. John's, and I've been noticing an increase in population of the homeless. We have some homeless filtering into our parish. My experience, 20 years with the homeless, is that they need mental health care, and if they're dealing with law enforcement and dealing with volunteers for the police, we're really not solving the problem. I find them probably coming in and out of jail, the same people. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. For instance, I see a young gentleman on Riley in front of Walgreens. I know he's mentally ill, and I've sat with him and provided some meals. I'm very cautious because some are violent and suffering from addictions. What I have noticed that LA is implementing, LA County, is a task force of people with some social work background to work with and obtain information and documentation to see what we can do to move them out of the jails and move them out of our community and into healthy living situations or some type of alternative care. So that's what I'm hoping Folsom takes a look at in the near future, is even implementing a program at the fairgrounds where they can shower, and there could be a type of program where these are folks that want to get help, and in order to show up at a certain time, they are part of a program that helps them to move out of being homeless and into society and possibly doing some kind of a task, like Pride Industry has tasks for the mentally challenged. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle. Unfortunately, because this isn't on the agenda, we aren't able to deliberate or take any action. I will tell you very quickly that we do have a navigator who works with our homeless population trying to move them out of homelessness, and we do have a social worker who rides with PD. So, yeah, if you want more information, welcome to get my contact information off the website, okay? Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item tonight is Scheduled Presentations. You have one presentation. This is a resolution of commendation honoring the Folsom Junior Bulldogs for earning the 2019 Excellence in Academics and Athletics Awards.
Okay, I'm going to come down and read the resolution. We're going to leave the handshaking and the congratulating to Vice Mayor Ernie Sheldon and Councilmember Roger Gaylord. Councilmember Carrie Howell and I are going to do you a favor and not shake your children's hands, because you can hear up here, we're a little under the weather, so if you guys want to meet me down there and... Yeah, Bob Tremaine. Lydia's talking to him, says she'll get you down here. Do we have Bob Tremaine here with us? There you go, okay. I'm sick, I'm not shaking your hands. Okay, we have a resolution of commendation honoring the Folsom Junior Bulldogs. Here they all come, looking very dapper, for earning the 2019 Excellence in Academics and Athletics Award, whereas the Folsom Junior Bulldogs is an official youth football and cheer association in Folsom, and whereas the Folsom Junior Bulldogs organization is committed to both academic and athletic excellence, and whereas members of the Folsom Junior Bulldog football and cheer teams maintain a grade point average of 3.0 or better during the football and cheer season, and whereas this level of academic achievement merits recognition from the Board of Directors of Folsom Youth Football and Cheer and the City of Folsom. Now therefore, I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the Folsom community, do hereby extend commendations in the highest regard to the members of the Folsom Junior Bulldogs, who earned the Excellence in Academics and Athletics Award 2019, and encourage, this is important, and encourage their continued scholastic excellence in the future. Passed and approved this 28th day of January 2020. So congratulations to all of you.
On behalf of the Bulldogs Junior Program, I want to thank everybody for coming. We have a lot of success on the playing field, whether we're cheering or on the football athletic field, but one of the things we're most proud of, especially with the children that are here today, is the hard work that they've done in the classroom. And, you know, football and cheer is only going to take them so far, but their academics and their hard work in the classroom is what's going to take them to be successful adults in the world, and we're very proud of that with their character, their sportsmanship, and just their hard work and effort. So with that, I want to thank all of them and their parents and their guardians for everything that they do to help support these children and their future within our society. So thank you very much. I'm going to go quickly through these and try not to mess up some of the last names. I call a lot of the games, and I still have a hard time with some of the names, but we'll get through it. So these are our gold award winners. These are the students with a 4.0, all As, and some of our best athletes on the field as well. So Anthony Benavides. Kenzie Brown. Daniel Chavez. Bailey Guyer. Carmen Hendricks. Carmine Hendricks. Only known by Hendricks. Victoria King. Reagan Kazurka. Sierra Osterling. Francis Punzal. Kara Sorensen. Katie Wagner. Nick Wagner. Brooke Wiegand. Katie Wu. Zachary Woodward. And now for our silver, our 3.5 grade point average students. Lacey Albright. Zachary Byersdorf. Sophie Cafarilla. Jamison Farrar. Ryland Guyer. Zane Grabowski. Theodore Greiley. Annie Hormonzi. Aiden Lopez. Colton Mixner. Bella Plensia. Brian Ray III. Danica Sandy. Serena Santos. I think we're out of line here. What's the last name? Upsher. Upsher. Rebecca Semenza. Richard Semenza. Brady Silva. Sebastian Upsher, I found yours. Alexis Valencia. There you go. Holly Wagner. And now for our bronze, our 3.0 students. Kaylee Albright. Anna Pelka. Zoe Tanner. And we saved our tallest athlete for the end, and he's only 11 years old. 13, alright. Graham Trainellis. I can say that because I've known Graham since he was five.
Let's give them all one more big round of applause. And then, yep, the Vice Mayor wants to say a couple words, and then we're going to be in a little bit discussing the 2020-21 budget, so if you want to stick around, you are welcome to do so.
All I want to say, this is my 12th year as a councilman on this event, and before that, I was sitting in the back watching it, okay? You're special to me. 1990, I promised you a football field, and I wasn't sure we were going to do that, but we did do that, okay? So you're special, the kids are special, the education part of this is so special because sports take you so far, and then education takes you further. So happy for you. I'll be out next year, if the good Lord lets me get to next year. I will be watching the games rather than trying to put them on for you, so, thank you. Where'd that crowd go? I guess it's not us after all. My goodness. Good, yeah, I heard that, that's good.
Okay, looks like nobody wanted to stay for the rest of the meeting, but that's okay, we'll keep going. Next item, please.
No, I see at least two members of the public that are not city employees.
Okay, your next item this evening is the Consent Calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by one motion.
I'll move consent.
Okay, nobody had anything, they wanted a poll, I take it. Okay, then we have a motion by Councilmember Howell, second by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll. Any discussion, I should say, questions, anything? Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Moving on.
Okay, our first discussion item tonight is Old Business, item 11. This is Resolution Number 10-384, a resolution of the City Council amending Attachment 1 to Resolution Number 10-362 pertaining to the Folsom Plan area water surcharge in the Prop 218 notice.
Okay, Mr. Yasutaki.
Alrighty, thank you. Mayor Aquino, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. This item is in front of you this evening because there were two line items that were left out of Attachment 1 to the resolution approved in December 2019. Those two items are the surcharges for the Folsom Plan area, one is the residential surcharge, and the other is the non-residential charge for each property south of Highway 50. So that is the amendment that is in front of you this evening. As you are aware, we did do our noticing last year. This was included in the notice, this was included in the rate study. It was just an omission on my part to physically include those two numbers on the attachment to the resolution from the public hearing.
Okay, any questions for him?
So, yeah, no, I don't have any questions.
No? Okay, then we will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 10384.
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Howell and a second from Vice Mayor Sheldon. Any other questions or comments or discussion?
I'll say something after.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
No.
And Aquino.
Yes.
I appreciate your due diligence and your follow-up. I'm just still a no because I was no the first time, so, but I appreciate you going back and making sure that shirt up.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next item.
Your last discussion item tonight is Old Business, item number 12. This is Budget for Fiscal Year 2021 Workshop: Introduction to the Budget and Requests for Budget Priorities.
Good evening, Mr. Tmani.
Good evening. Good evening, May.
I'll interrupt you one time to say that we are going to continue with our practice of letting staff get all the way through their presentation, and we will hold our questions and comments until you are done, okay? So the floor is yours, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Stacy Tmani, Finance Director. I'm back in front of you tonight for our second workshop for the fiscal year 2021 budget. Just wanted to take a quick look at the schedule again. On February 11th, we have the Quarterly Financial Report, where I'll present the results of the first half of fiscal year 1920. On February 25th, you'll have your full budget workshop, including the presentation of our financial projections for next year. We'll bring the proposed budget to you on April 28th, conduct the public hearing on May 12th, and then we plan for adoption of the budget on May 26th. I'd like to begin with a look at our projected as-is budget for the General Fund for Fiscal Year 21. The second column on this chart. To prepare the figures for 21, we took 2020's approved budget and added in expected increases for items such as changes to labor agreements and increased benefit costs. Because this 21 base budget doesn't include any one-time appropriations, we removed about 900,000 of one-time allocations from the fiscal year 20 budget, that's why it says adjusted up at the top, so that you could compare base budget to base budget. And what we're projecting is that there'll be a $3.3 million increase, or 3.68%, between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21's budget. This is without any extra positions or one-time allocations or any other types of appropriations. We wanted to do the base budget to the base budget just so that you could see that without doing anything new, this is the increase we're expecting, about 3.68%. Revenue projections will be coming to you in my presentations in the next two meetings. That's where you'll get a better picture of how much you have to work with between the expenditures here and the revenue levels that we expect to come in. So with that in mind, I wanted to return to the five questions that I asked in our previous meeting on January 14th. We received your initial responses to those questions during the last workshop and over the last couple of weeks, and tonight we plan to revisit the questions, go over your responses, and allow time for discussion, further feedback, and direction. As additional information in your packet, you did receive two new pie charts showing the breakdown of the general fund expenditures by division, and also a chart with the breakdown for non-general fund expenses for public works projects. And you also received a listing of all contracts organized by department, and that included the vendor, a description of what the contract is paying for, and the contract amount. So now I'd like to go over the questions one more time, and I know that's a little bit hard to read, but I wanted to put all of the responses that we've received so far on here, and then having to add to it or however you would like to go forward with completing these questions. So the first one was, what are your top three priorities you'd like to begin setting aside funds for in the fiscal year 2021 budget in order to complete the project in a future year? So I'll quickly read through them. Mayor Aquino responded to create a trust fund for pensions, fund improvements to the central business district, and create transportation infrastructure and traffic calming measures to make the city more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. Vice Mayor Sheldon responded with wanting to have an allocation of $3 million to park renovation to catch up on deferred maintenance. Councilmember Gaylord, install one shade structure at Nissenon or Economy Park, add one battalion chief in the fire department, and allocate additional funding for traffic safety, speeding mitigation, such as additional officers and/or investment in technology. Councilmember Howell, fund additional park maintenance and budget funds for transportation projects if new measure A is unsuccessful. Councilmember Kozlowski, funding to prepare a plan for enhanced public facilities, specifically those currently housed at the Folsom Municipal Complex, so this would include banquet and conference spaces, rodeo venue, or new expanded multi-event indoor/outdoor facility. He'd also like to fund to evaluate partnerships with smud or other green things for electrical power supply to Folsom residents and businesses, and continue the development of safe pedestrian and bicycle commuter pathways, and introduce traffic calming, expediting measures like roundabouts. So that was question number one. Question number two, if revenues are projected to exceed budgeted expenditures resulting in a budget surplus, are you more interested in using this money to contribute to the general fund reserve or allocate funds to one-time projects? We've received two responses on this one so far. Mayor Aquino would like a combination of general fund reserve, adding a police substation in the historic district parking garage, and funding park restoration and maintenance. And Councilmember Kozlowski responded he'd like to add to the city's reserve fund or to strategically buy down the unfunded retirement commitments. Question number three, are there services or programs the city's general fund is currently providing that you do not see as significantly valuable at this time and would like to scale back in order to use the funding elsewhere? We didn't get any specifics on this one. Mayor Aquino responded with not at this time, and Councilmember Kozlowski said that the priorities I have suggested fall into the mission of our parks and public works and planning departments. I feel that modest redirection or reprioritization is needed rather than significant modification to any other programmatic responsibility. Number four, what is the one area in which the city can focus resources and efforts towards achieving specific results that will make the biggest difference? Mayor Aquino responded with focus on funding additional police officers. I know some of your other responses to other questions fill in this, but I just didn't put them in there specifically. If you want to pick one of your first ones and let us know, we can add that in as your top priority. Councilmember Kozlowski responded, in order to be able to build on our past success, we need to look to a future with municipal amenities and multimodal transportation infrastructure that suits a city of 100,000 residents. We also need to promote and support responsible use of natural resources so that our impact on water quality and availability is light, and so that we can serve land and air resources for the enjoyment of future generations of Folsom residents. And our final question, this was the pie chart asking, is the current allocation of funding by department still appropriate? Mayor Aquino responded, I think so, but I would like to explore the response models in the fire department to make sure they're the most efficient. Vice Mayor Sheldon responded that he would like to look into allocating the cell tower revenue specifically for parks. Councilmember Gaylord, add a battalion chief and more funding for traffic safety, speeding mitigation. Councilmember Howell, may need to reallocate funds to public work. Councilmember Howell, may need to reallocate funds to public works for transportation projects if new Measure A is unsuccessful. And Councilmember Kozlowski said, yes, our continued prioritization of public safety is paramount. So those were our five questions, the responses that we've received so far. And that concludes my presentation. I'd like to open it up to you if you have any further discussion or questions for staff or any additional direction you'd like to provide as we move forward in this budget process. Thank you.
Okay, who'd like to start? Okay.
So first of all, thank you very much, and thank you Elaine and your staff for doing this. This is really great. One of the things that we've been able to go through are the different allocations and different initiatives. One thing that's missing, though, besides a larger font, is really the city's top 10, right? So like, within here, there really isn't a grading scale of what can be, you know, what is deemed important but not imperative, or, you know, like a 1 through 10, like of where you think you can slide a little and not slide. So I'd love to see that measurement or that kind of analysis, like, added into here.
Among the contracts, you mean?
Yeah, like, you know, when you're saying if you need to rob Peter to pay Paul for whatever it is you're looking for on that pie, to, you know, to adjust it a little bit for whatever we think as a body would be appropriate for the city, we need to know where those funds would be best to take from, right? So like, if we're saying move public works this way, move police and fire that way, you know, what are some things we can lose and what are some things we just absolutely can't lose, you know? So that's, I guess that's what I was looking for and why I didn't answer some of those questions yet, so.
Okay, so would you like a top 10 from each department, or what would be useful to you?
I think so, because, I mean, right now, we're looking at a pie chart from each department, right? And where they sit as the budget. But we don't know, you know, 1% can mean a lot, you know what I mean? Or like a half a percent can mean a lot, or a tenth of a percent.
And it's different for each department. Would you maybe want 1%, like, a value of 1% for each department? Because that would be different than 10 contracts. The dollar amount would be different for each department.
I'm not sure how to ask specifically what I'm looking for. I am looking for, because I think, you know, some of the things that I've listed on here, you know, we've already last year gone through what those costs and, you know, where the obligations and the impacts to the budget are. So maybe you, I don't know how to equate that, but I'm just looking for in this list what's important and what's imperative, you know, like.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense.
An alternative to that is, you know, if you can, if you choose to articulate what you're trying to add and, you know, generally, generally what other functions you would see, like, if you look at that pie chart and you would want to reduce another area to make room in another pipe, more room in another pie piece, it's part of our job as staff to then take that broad direction and come back to you with, through the whole vetting and sorting and reprioritization process with the departments, to come back with revised budgets and say, okay, we sifted through everything, this is what we're putting forward to you. It's now reduced by 1% because you wanted, you know, this added over here. If that makes sense, instead of trying to filter through, putting you guys through, filtering through literally thousands and thousands of pieces of information for each department.
Yeah, I mean, I think, maybe we can circle back with some other questions, but I just don't know how to look at everything, you know, from a 30,000-foot overview and say, well, we don't need that, so let's just put that here.
So if I could offer something, I think maybe what you're thinking is, you know, in the Parks and Recreation Department, they have their list of all their maintenance and renovation needs, and they have those ranked, all the ones, those are the most important things because they're safety and that sort of things, and those are the things that if you have any money, you take care of all the ones first, and then the twos, and then the threes, and then the fours, and maybe fives, a drinking fountain or something like that. What I'm hearing from you is you'd like to see from that list of contracts that we have, what are the ones, what are the twos, the threes, the fours, the fives?
Each department, yeah, not specifically parks, but.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah, I think we can do that. I do want to make clear that not all expenses for each department are embedded in contracts. You know, it's like, a lot of programs aren't, you know, that's a list of contracts, but it's not necessarily capturing what every department does. So if you just start ranking, you know, departments don't equal a combination of contracts, there's a lot more to it.
But all we have here is a pie chart and then contracts, right? We don't have the other pieces.
Yeah, because that's what was requested, so.
Vice Mayor Sheldon, you have some questions or comments?
Well, in a sense, yeah. I want to justify, I haven't asked for $3 million since maybe 20 years ago. But we're now faced with the point that some of our parks are 28 years old. Back in the 85s and 95, they were new. But they're not new now. And if we don't pay attention to renovation, then we're going to redo them. Because the parks are well-used and people like them and they expect them to be there. And if we don't take care of them when we can, and Park and Rec has done a tremendous job, as the mayor said, of identifying what's what and the priorities, we're going to hurt. And then we're going to try to close a park in a neighborhood? That'd be today. Okay, that just won't happen. We will have great attendance in this room if we try that. So we're going to have to figure out how to accomplish that. And I told the Park and Rec people recently at an FAA meeting, say what you need. Don't reduce what the need is because you feel you have a better chance of getting a lesser amount than a big amount. If the amount is big, then state it, so that us up here and the staff out there know what we're dealing with. If we need $3 million, we ask you for $1 million because we're trying to be a team player. We're not doing the service to the town that we need to do. So I'm just basically justifying why I asked you for $3 million. Second point that I'm saying, before the recession hit many years ago, the cell tower money was allocated to the Park and Rec Department because the Park and Rec Department does everything that needs to be done for the cell towers, all the paperwork, all the scheduling and so forth. But the money goes in the general fund. Now, it didn't at the time, and our logic at the time was since you're making our parks ugly with those cell towers, which I always said that, and I still say that, even though they made the improvements, I think the person that's suffering should be the recipient of the money that is being made off of it, and that's why. But I recognize, I sat up here during the recession, and I know we had to take money from a lot of places. We didn't want to take it from, but we had no choice. And I don't regret our choices. But now, we're lumbering off. I think we need to analyze the impact of the cell towers being out of the general fund and put them back in Park and Rec so that they can, I think the mayor got a good, on her tour, she's got a good idea of what they need to do. Reoccurring amount of money, always knowing something's coming in is a lot better than maybe I can get them to justify and give me something. And the reason behind that, you can order things ahead of time and have them done in real time. Otherwise, now you got it, now you got to spend it now. It's months to get it acquired and implemented. It's a big lag time, so it's better to have a reoccurring money source if we can do it. So I think we need to look at it. We've come out of it to the point that we're not completely control money down the drain, but we are better than we were 12 years ago. Okay, so that's the things I'm thinking now. The mayor had some ideas, and I agree with every idea she had on that one question that you asked. So I have no problem she had, right? I think, I have a tendency to want to put money aside and then buy something later, rather than just buy it and be in debt for it while you're paying it off. Sometimes you have no choice, but that's something I prefer. So I think this council should look real hard at the mayor's suggestion about, in different areas, putting money aside every year, and it reduces the budget and it makes the department heads a little more challenged because they won't have the increases necessarily. I am not interested whatsoever as one person rating in any respect the rainy day fund because it's going to come, as sure as anything else is going to come. We're going to need that again like we did before, the council that Ms. Howell was on, did a good job of preparing for that, thank goodness, otherwise we would really be in trouble. I think we're doing the same thing, we're going the same way, and it can happen again. So I'm not interested, you know, now, once we hit the 18 million mark, I think we can be a little bit more observant as to the total amount, how, maybe we split it up, we don't put all the profit from the year into the reserve, maybe we take some and redo some of the other stuff, add to the, we're putting money away. Now, I am not quite sure that the pie chart reflects the actual financial support to the departments. I think we made a change way back once, at some time, to adjust what we use as a percentage of the money on the pie chart. And I'm not against it, okay? But I think that distorts a little bit about, and I know on the latest staff report we had for tonight, the expense that we have to pay for certain things. I'm not challenging how they justify, I just overwhelmed this amount of money it costs to run a city, you know? Finally, one thing, I did look at one item in the contracts. I see we have a contract to, we allocate $5,000 to the Historic Association for Marketing. I think that should be terminated and picked up by the tourism branch. The million-two that they get from us on our bid process that we approve for, I think should cover that because that's basically what that's doing. Marketing for the business is the same thing as tourism for that area. So that's about all for now.
Councilmember Howell, your comment.
Just to follow on Ernie's comments, Lorraine, maybe you can throw a number out here, but you were talking about park maintenance, Ernie. If I am correct, based on my last conversation with one of the Parks Commissioners about this, isn't the need for park maintenance something on the order of 20 or 30 million?
Total.
Right.
And that also includes, I believe, and Lorraine can do that, I believe it also takes into effect the parks that are not done.
No, I'm not even sure that it does. I think that predominantly is just the maintenance backlog that we have now.
Good evening, Mayor Aquino and councilmembers, Lorraine Pajoni. So, there's a couple different buckets. There's the renovation master plan that identifies about $30 million worth of items to be renovated. The $3 million number is what gets all those renovated items current, so to speak. So we do have some items that are 28, 24, 25, all the way down to, you know, their life cycle has come and gone, and so that's where the $3 million line was, that's what the Parks and Rec Commission had recommended. The other one is we have 10.
But that again was within the constraints of the existing budget. My, that's within the constraints of the existing budget. My point being that if they could do whatever they wanted, they'd need 20 million bucks, basically, to do all the renovations that are, you know, currently planned.
These are renovations to actually fix the assets, you know?
Right.
Benches, chairs.
Right.
And it's about, it's about 30 million.
Right.
Yeah.
I only make the point because we're talking about a drop in a really, really big bucket. And so my next question is going to be, what is the actual revenue from the cell tower? I mean, I don't disagree with you, Ernie, that the money should stay there, but I think, again, it's a really small number.
I did ask that question.
It's about 375,000.
It does.
Let me clarify one thing, Lorraine. I think the $30 million is the price tag you gave to your people, the Park and Rec Commission and the staff, you gave to every asset on a park. That's what it is for the total assets of the park, $30 million of renovation potential. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's not an annual, it's over the lifespan of that item.
Right.
But you're saying you got $30 million of.
Of assets, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. And then another 30 million of unfinished parks, so there's 10 parks that are unfinished.
That 30 million's over the lifespan of the asset? And so how do you know what the asset of, like, what's that lifespan of the average?
Each asset's different, so we use the various criteria through the National Park, NRPA, the National Recreation and Park Association. So they assign, you know, benches should last 10 years, fences should last 12 years. So that's what we use. And then we use, you know, our own observations. So if we go out and look at a sign and it's truly 10 years old, but it's, has been in the shade and hasn't been, you know, struck by, you know, sprinklers, it's like, great, that doesn't get the condition rating we would normally, you know, put it in at its lifecycle. So we, that's how we do that.
Or a million dollars' worth of astroturf that maybe doesn't last 10 years, only gets to seven. Those sorts of things. I was only trying to make the point.
Nine years, yeah.
I was only trying to make the point that it's a, the total requirement is a really, really big number, so even if we did allocate $375,000 a year, it buys us almost nothing. So that was my only point. And I don't disagree with allocating that money back to park maintenance, but again, it's just, it's a very, very small number.
And Stacy, maybe you could take a minute to explain that the cell phone revenue does indeed actually live in the Parks and Rec budget, correct?
Sure, yes. When we take their entire budget, they're getting credit for that. So you would be, if you want to give them the cell tower revenue, you'd actually be giving them a bigger piece of the pie, essentially. So, because it is coming into the general fund, they're getting credit for it in the budget document. We lay out which revenue sources Parks and Rec brings in, such as the zoo or other things like that, and cell tower revenue is one of those. And then they get their portion of the general fund support to then fund their entire budget. So if you wanted to give them an extra 375,000, that would be giving them a little bit bigger piece of the pie, taking it from somewhere else.
Keep in mind, the Park and Rec Department, as long as I've been in this town, has had the requirement for self-sustainment. No other department has necessarily that requirement, okay? And with good reason. Some departments cannot be self-sustaining, okay?
They get a pretty big allocation from the general fund for a lot of their programs, so it's not 100% self-sustaining.
They do raise revenue through their programs, but they're absolutely subsidized by the general fund.
Yeah.
I mean, and they know that, they have been living with that, and their programs are geared to try to get maximum revenue back in order for the sake. I think the best they did may be around 75%, somewhere in that area, which is pretty good, when you're 75% funded from your programs. So that's a little bit of consideration.
You'd have to look into that, there might be some programs that are at that level. I don't know how, what the percentage is for each program, but they get a sufficient, very sufficient, general fund support. It's not at 75% overall for their entire department.
No, I mean the self-sustainment, that's a goal, to try to be self-sustaining, 75% of whatever the budget you gave them.
Except I don't think that's ever been the case because a fair amount of the construction of facilities has come from grants.
No, I'm talking about operation. Budgets for construction that comes from a lot of sources.
Okay, so, but that's a, you know, that's separating, that's a significant distinction. As I said in my commentary, I'm just, I'm concerned about what may or may not happen with the transportation funding. I know that, you know, there are needs, and as the population grows, there will be needs certainly in the police department. I think right now we're all caught up in fire because of the opening of the new fire station and the hiring of personnel a year and a half ago, or actually two years ago now. But again, my concern is what's going to happen with the transportation funding if Measure A either doesn't go forward or if it goes forward and it doesn't pass. Because we needed those two interchanges yesterday, and without that, despite the contribution from the development community, we needed them before South of 50 even moved forward. And the city has a responsibility to pay for some portion of that, so that's one of my, that's only one of my concerns. And now that I've mentioned the police department, I want to, I said this to the chief when I spoke to him over the weekend, but congratulations to those two motor officers that were not expecting to be chasing down violent criminals, but awesome job. Don't mess with motorcycles in Folsom.
Are you done?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so I have a couple comments. First of all, thank you very much for putting together that list of non-essential contracts. I'm still digesting it, but there are things in there that I didn't know about, you know, making a contribution for Meals on Wheels, for example. One thing that kind of stuck at me was $25,000 to pressure wash sidewalks in the historic district. I don't know how often we're doing that, but I thought that was a lot. But anyway, still digesting that. A couple things, I also am in favor of a battalion chief, and I know that was an ask last year. My understanding was that if the ambulance increased revenue, you know, panned out, that that's something that we would be considering.
Yeah, it's, just as I've mentioned to a few of you, it was, it's already my. Yeah, it's, just as I've mentioned to a few of you, it was, it's already my plan to put that forward as a proposal. Again, that's just my draft budget, but I intend to put it forward because now the revenue has.
Okay, so, I did not include it in my answers, but I'm in favor of that. Also, I want to, Chief Rodriguez is probably a little confused back there because I think my answer to one of the questions got lost in translation a little bit. It asked, the question was, basically, are the current allocations still adequate? My answer is kind of, I think so. But one of the questions that I've kind of often wondered, just because I know some departments do it differently, has the city ever looked at the way we staff the Fire Department with the 48 hours on, 96 hours off? Maybe it is the most efficient economical way to do it. I have no idea. I just thought that, you know, I would ask that question because sometimes staffing does change, as we know with the water treatment operators. We actually just moved them to a 24-hour shift because it ended up staying in the taxpayers' money. So, that was my question there, but I think it came out a little.
Mayor, maybe I could ask Jim Francis, since he oversees labor relations, and this would be something that would be bargained with, collectively bargained. Jim, maybe you could comment on whether work schedules have been specifically addressed recently with fire?
And the only other comment that I'm going to make before Jim speaks, because I've just looked around the room, and the two people that have been in this room the longest are myself and former mayor Holderness. And I just want to assure you that I'm not sure that there's any possible staffing combination in the Fire Department that hasn't been tried at least once in the last 26 years or so that Bob and I have been around. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, the memorandum of understanding with the Fire Union has the work schedule in it. And that's been in it now, the 48-96 schedule's been in it for a little over 10 years. I might add that that is the most common schedule used by most fire departments. And occasionally, there's been informal talk about it as to what would happen if you changed it and so on. And that usually centers around the use of overtime and how much overtime would be used in each scheduling. But it is a bargained condition of employment. And so, any change that would have to be done through bargaining. And like I say, it's been there at least 10 years in the, and none of the chiefs that I know of, anyway, have suggested anything different than that at this point.
Got it, okay.
But the last time it was changed, it was extremely contentious.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. It would certainly be contentious.
Okay, well.
If I could add just a caution in that my freshman year on this council, I was asked to meet with our representative from our fire station and to be Representative 522. And I asked a question in the conversation, "Did you ever consider 12-hour shifts like hospitals do?" I have never been asked for another meeting since then.
So, it seemed like although maybe we, you know, answered questions differently or, but there seemed to be some common themes, no matter, you know, whether the answer was to question one or five or whatever. But certainly seems like park renovation and maintenance, there's some agreement there that we need to devote some money there because putting off some of that will cost us more in the long run. I think there was some agreement about transportation infrastructure, traffic calming, all that kind of stuff, especially if Measure A doesn't pass. Obviously, public safety, police and fire will always be the number-one priority. Nobody else mentioned a police substation in the Historic District garage, but now that I have, I hope so others will support that idea.
Based on a meeting that we had recently, I would definitely support it, especially since we don't know what we're going to do with that retail space.
Jane here.
Other than rent it out for parties. That's all it's been used for in the last year.
Okay. And then, I think also, a common theme was to continue to be responsible and maintain that 15% reserve and hopefully continue to put some money away to, you know, for the retiree health benefits and the pensions and all that kind of stuff. I did want to relay a conversation that I had today with Rabbi Yossi Grossbaum. They used the Community Center recently for, when they had the Auschwitz survivor there, Mr. Roth. And he mentioned, I was toward the front, so I didn't realize they were having this problem, but only the speakers in the front of the room were working. So, the folks in the back were, at times, could not hear the presentation. And I just think it's important that we remember that, you know, some of these amenities, we're making money off them from rental fees and stuff. So, that probably needs to be a priority in terms of when we are, you know, deciding what things should be renovated and stuff first.
Exactly. And I spoke with Rabbi Grossbaum today as well and was dismayed to hear that, you know, the back half of the room wasn't able to hear. Coincidentally, the Friday before last, I spent most of my morning being toured around by key Parks and Rec staff that are assigned to the Community Center, showing me all the challenges at that facility, focusing on, you know, for example, stage lighting, lights that are, you know, just completely not working, audiovisual system. We're at a point where groups bring their own audio now. You know, a lot of the equipment, the kitchen, a lot of the equipment in there is original to the building. And we're just having a hard time keeping up with other venues that, you know, the kinds of things, amenities that people are looking for when they're trying to rent a facility. All those things I just mentioned are atrociously expensive. My eyes practically popped out of my head when I was handed a spreadsheet of just some simple things I just wanted to take care of, and they are budget busters. But you are absolutely right, Mayor. You know, we have to continue to invest and preserve, you know, our great facilities, but it's going to cost money, and that takes things away from other things. It's just decisions.
And I'm just going to jump on Sarah's bandwagon about the Community Center. I have a feeling that I've probably spent more time than any of us inside that building, both behind the bar, in the kitchen, and in the main part of the room. And every time I go to an event down there, whoever the current Parks and Rec Director is, ends up getting a phone call, as does the City Manager. It usually happens on Monday morning. And, you know, so, I'm in complete agreement that we need to do something about replacing equipment in that kitchen that's not operating. I complained during the water conservation years that we can't be asking our residents to conserve water when we've got every sink in the kitchen and the Community Center leaking. So, you know, all of those things. And I know kitchen equipment is ridiculously expensive, but we need to find some ways to cover the cost of that. I'm actually kind of amazed at the amount of rentals that we still have. And that, you know, renting that building is not inexpensive.
Yeah, I'm told it's one of the few places that has that amount of square footage in Folsom, and that's kind of our.
Oh, it's the only place.
Our saving grace. It's our only place, you're right. And so, you know, that's what's keeping people, you know, it's the right size for a lot of weddings. It's the right, you know, it's the right size. But I know that a lot of folks looking to rent are disappointed with what they find, and they choose it because of the location and the size. And, you know, that's, we're not putting our best foot forward there, for sure.
No, you know, even if it means that we, you know, that we figure out a way to keep a percentage of the rentals, you know, and again, you know, I spoke to Ted just in the last week, and there's only, I think he told me, there's only two Friday nights and two Saturday nights left the rest of the calendar year that it's not rented.
Yeah, it's fully rented. You know, of course, when I was hearing these numbers, I was initially like, well, if we could just improve these amenities, we could, you know, could add more rentals, and there's no more capacity. I mean, it is hugely in demand. You can barely find a slot, honestly, but it is what it is.
Well, that sounds like it could be a, question number one, something that could be done over time would be that. Councilmember Gaylord, you're next.
Yeah, actually, I just had a couple of questions to follow up on some of the stuff you mentioned with regards to that. Is there any type of, like, extended service plan that we can put the high-value equipment under that's, so it's preventative maintenance and service going forward?
Not at this point.
Because I know there is for audio.
Well, the equipment in there, honestly, it is, most of it is original, if you can believe that. You know, the kitchen is original. You know, the audio, I think, and Lorraine can correct me, but I think it was replaced, you know, a number of years ago, but like, a long time ago. Nothing is under any kind of warranty or extended service agreement, and nobody would take it at this point, I'm thinking, so, no.
Most of the equipment in that building, I believe, is 30 years older.
Okay, hold on, go ahead, Roger.
And then, to your point with the parking garage, I thought that was already something that was being theorized prior, like, in consideration.
Well, it's something that I've been talking with the chief in Parks and Rec. What we're talking about is the city has a space that's part of the parking garage down in the Historic District. And I'd been speaking with the police chief and the Parks and Rec Director about a concept of perhaps using the space, which before has been used as a museum, and we've rented it out for a few events, but it's just basically vacant. It's a vacant shell. Talked about using half of it as a police substation to have a presence down in the Historic District, and the other half maybe to rent out to, you know, raise some revenue to help pay the bills and other city bills. Again, I feel like I'm a broken record. All of that that I just said sounds super great, but it's super expensive also. So, we're just weighing a lot of options right now for the police portion. We're trying to see what degree of grants we could get to pay for that, you know. But again, you know, if we want to use part of it for events, for example, we have to build a commercial-grade kitchen. We have to, you know, all these things, and, you know, restrooms and things like that. And it's expensive, but it's something that will be before the council for your consideration to talk about options.
That's something you support, Roger?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And that was a great idea when I first heard it, so I'm glad that it's on the table. So, the last question is, was there any consideration going back to what we talked about the last budget round with the PERS, changing that up to save that amount of money to add back to the budget, changing the pay cycle on it?
Yes, that's certainly being considered again, and those options will be given too because you could, you know, there are a number of suggestions out there that you could use that money for while reducing the amount that goes into PERS. So, you know, there were a lot of things regarding reducing the liabilities. There was a new trust fund to be set up, things like that. So, it will be part of the options that are available.
Awesome. That's all I have, thanks.
I just want to comment on that, on the senior, the Community Center. The audio has never worked. It's been lousy from day one when they opened it up, okay? And they tried to say it was a building problem. It's not, because when we do the runway for the autistic kids, we hire out and they bring in their own equipment and it works just fine. So, it's not a building problem, it's an equipment problem. And you're absolutely right in your disgust with the performance of that, it's horrible. And if you're in the back, you're in trouble. You will not hear what's going on in front.
Okay. Okay, so, what's the next step?
The next step is I'll be coming back to you with the financial report. You'll have more information on where we're looking at for this year. And then, we'll be coming forward with the budget presentation. So, that'll be all of the revenue projections and all the information you need to make more of these decisions.
Okay, but you got an idea of some common themes, even if we didn't all answer them in the same question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I have one minor question.
Yes, of course.
One minor question. It's not a budget buster or nothing, but I believe the library boss is here. Can we put in a request to paint the name of the library? It needs some refreshment. It's hurting. I was out there, and I tell you, my son reminds me every time because he's the one that saw that it needs to be repainted.
Oh, sure, blame this all on Ernie.
I will consult with the library boss on that.
Yeah, my, yeah. You're the boss? Okay. I know you're the boss for everything.
I'll talk to the boss out there and the library boss, yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
I think it's a good idea doing it this way.
Okay, good.
Personally, I think it's very good. I sort of miss Carrie and her three-foot stack of papers when she first came on the council and the way we did it.
Oh, that was the old dot-matrix paper from the printer.
Okay, City Manager Report.
Brenda Young remembers that. She started laughing when she saw me walk in the building with that stack of paper.
Hello, everyone. Last week, the mayor delivered the 2020 State of the City speech at the annual luncheon hosted by the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and did a great job. The video of the full speech is available on the city's website at www.folsom.ca.us. We've also been pushing out a link on our social media outlets. Work has begun on a five-year federal project to raise the height of Folsom Dam to increase flood protection for the greater Sacramento region. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is overseeing the project. When complete, all eight dikes, the left and right wing dams, and Mormon Island Auxiliary Dam will all be raised to a new elevation of 344 square feet. The progress on the Green Valley Road Widening Project, which I know some of you have been tracking, that continues, and the project should be complete by late spring. One-way traffic control will occur for nighttime work from 8:30 p.m. to 5:30 a.m., Monday through Wednesday, January 27th through January 29th, and motors can expect minor traffic delays. You can join the Folsom Police Department and the Folsom Public Library and our library boss for a special after-school storytime at 3:30 p.m. on Wednesday, January 29th. A police officer and a Citizens Against Public Safety volunteer will read a favorite book in the storytime room. Learn more at folsom.ca.us/library. And finally, in honor of the big game this coming Sunday, seniors age 55-plus are invited to a fun football-themed celebration from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. this Friday. The free event includes light refreshments, a lively quarterback-themed game, bingo, and a raffle. Partygoers may bring a brown bag lunch. And you can find more about the event at the Folsom Senior Center, which is located right next door at 48 Natoma Street.
Do you have to, like, bring a hot dog with you? Is that the mandatory lunch?
Maybe, yeah. That's all I have.
I think the Public Works Director was looking like he was going to attend that one.
Councilmember Gaylord, are you ready?
I am ready. So, I only have one thing. Actually, I'll say thank you to staff for putting that together. And I appointed a new planning commissioner. His name is Andrew Grant. Some of you may know him. He actually ran for Congress last election. So, he is, I think he's official now, right, Krista?
Yes, he is.
Excellent. So, he will be taking the reins from my prior commissioner, and I wanted to thank Mayor Kuno for putting a bird in his ear and letting, him letting me know he was interested. So, thank you for that, and that's all I got.
Excellent choice. Councilmember Howell.
Regional sand meeting, thank you, Sarah, for attending on my behalf. And I'm assuming you actually were one of the people that voted to make me the vice chair, so, thank you. That will be my second or third go-around in that situation with regional sand. There's ongoing conversations in the background about perhaps some future administrative changes at regional sand, but that remains to be seen how those will go. At STA, we've got another subcommittee meeting tomorrow. We're still working on the expenditure plan for what projects will or will not be included or how, what the breakdown on the funding's going to be for the potential new Measure A. And that, you know, everybody in the region is kind of battling over where that money's going to go, and we're hoping that we can find a way to get everybody on the same page and agree to just put it on the ballot and see where it goes. SAC Plasterville, JPA, that meeting is on Monday. We only meet quarterly, so I haven't received the agenda packet, so I'm not really sure what's on that. But if anybody's interested in that meeting, it's in this council chambers at 9:30 on Monday morning. RT, I understand that so far, so good with the new service that goes from midtown to the airport. There's been quite a bit of posting about it, so if anybody's interested in doing that, that's a great opportunity. And I understand that the City Manager and some other folks attended the recent press conference about the new micro-transit service that has started in Folsom. And I'm sure I'll find out at the next RT board meeting what the ridership has been to this point. I'm hoping that it will be successful in getting people that, excuse me, that are taking public transportation, say, from midtown. I know there's Coco, the woman that works at Intel, was hopefully taking that service And speaking of the Community Center, the Rotary and Crab Feed, which is the oldest one in Folsom, is this Saturday at the Community Center. So, I'll be helping out, setting up and at the bar this time, but in the kitchen on Sunday, excuse me, Saturday morning. So, hopefully, I don't have anything to call and whine to Lorraine about on Monday. But if anybody's interested in that, you can contact me directly for tickets, and they're still available.
Hold on, okay.
Since I've been on the council, I think I attended all the mayor State of the City events and compliment Mayor Kino. If it wasn't the best, it's one of the best. It was very good and very informative and well-done. Monday, the 4th of February, I go under the knife supposedly to get well. And whether I'll make the 11th, it remains to be seen, but we'll find out. For the Police Department, the chief, I've had a request since about a month ago. My son and I were hit, we assumed by a deer, because it sure dented our car pretty well, son and I were hit, we assumed by a deer, because it sure dented our car pretty well, and it got away. We never did find it. I assume it was a tough deer. But when I was stationed up in Upper Michigan, that was quite common, deer running into cars. But they used to be able to buy a whistle. They called it a deer whistle that somehow bothers the deer and kept them away from your car. So I would like to have a stake a look while we're going through the budget, if it's such a thing that we could make available to certain people. And maybe that will cut down some of the, because I hear this, according to the people that fixed my car, it wasn't, it's not uncommon, there's a lot of deer hits in this area, more than I ever thought. So if we could take a look at that, that would be...
Ernie, where were you?
Right in front of the police department, right in front of the driveway. I think they, I was told that the Lutheran church on Montrose has a garden in the back, and they have a very good garden, well done by a person. And the deer like to go there and eat. And they come up this way to go back into the, behind the park area. And I think they were coming up Montrose, and they just smacked the hell out of it.
No, I've been told, and this goes back to Chief Renaud, who within weeks of coming to work here was driving across Folsom Lake Crossing very early in the morning in the SUV. That is a historical migratory pattern for deer. So the deer jumped into her driver's side window.
Wow.
She was on the phone with the police department at the time, so they sent somebody immediately thinking they were going to find a gigantic dead deer. It was stunned and it ran off.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's a migratory pattern.
It's amazing.
I don't think we should blame it on the garden at the church.
Would we help out?
I blame it on the deer, but it wasn't too bad. I end up only paying a copay of $50, which is amazing. Nobody gets away with that, but it's good to be in USAA because I paid half, it was about $3,000 worth of damage, but it's repaired.
We have added some deer crossing signs at locations in the city recently. It is deer mating season, and there, you know, there's some aggressive behavior going on with the deer, and they end up in the street. We also, in our most recent newsletter, we included, you know, some tips on avoiding vehicle animal collision. So we're trying to push out public education on it, but it's, you know, it's that natural spaces, you know, adjacent to residential spaces that presents a challenge sometimes.
And the difficulty is that the deer don't necessarily know where those deer crossings are?
They would just read the signs, we'd be all set.
It's all right here.
Okay. Just a couple of things. I wanted to let my colleagues know that I have appointed Justin Rathel as the chair of the Community Service Day this year. He's kind of been in the trenches since the beginning, and I know he'll do a great job. I want to thank the city manager and Christine Brainard and Chris Shepard for their help with the State of the City address. Will not be giving that address again here at a council meeting, but as the city manager said, you can watch it online, and we will be following up with kind of a written State of the City report that very closely mimics that speech, but will have no awkward photos